Yes.
Okay, uh, this is the Stark County Council meeting April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. We are present in forum. Uh, just real quick, when you look at the uh agenda, you can see that the uh item that was on that I had previously put on there. Um, about the merit board, uh, pick it off because I talked to a couple of merit board members called me today and I said, but we just wanted to get the message out that council hasn't ever been holding back on that. They agreed. They didn't know where the previous discussion I come from, so we're gonna hold back on that. But I have been reviewing the fiduciary and the uh actuary more to get a better understanding and looking at other counties. But also, as I mentioned before, talk to the state representatives again about getting some more assistance with that. So anyways, so for now, um, we'll leave that. Um, I do have before me the minutes from March twentieth. And March twelve, March thirty-first. If someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, please, in March.
Yeah, a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
I was looking down, sorry. All right, she gets there. And I have a piece of old business that I'd like to bring up before we get started on the list. I promised you that I would try to get you a quote to fix those remaining locks of the jail. I only just got the phone, uh, actually with Don and then the sheriff, but then just before that, Mickey Whitehead, the representative from Securitas Stanley. Um, the the lock guy was originally looking at replacing all the locks. I said, well, really, we'd like to just get the locks as quickly as possible. It don't work, working. Well, for six locks installed, programmed, everything, and it's the only place that we can get it from. And like I said, Mickey was from St. One of the help, and they assured that those are gonna work. They're Corbin locks. Corbin's gonna specially build them. Um, there's seventy-five hundred apiece. So I'd like to ask for an approval of a motion for approval of up to forty-five thousand to repair the sheriff's lot. The sheriff has already agreed, and Don Beak, they have both agreed. That we'd like to move forward for that.
Was there money saved on on the server? Was there some money?
We we ended up having to spend that on the server. They they got the two new drives and started its learning. It just it it wouldn't work. And so they came back and they said, look, if you will honor the original quote.
So where would we where will we take out of Kume Camp?
Well, I think we should still go with uh, um, well, we took that out of ARPA. I think we'd be okay still to do the this one out of ARPA, too. You got a motion?
I made a motion that we paid for the life in the amount of forty-five, forty-five, up to forty-five thousand dollars of the ARPA.
Oh, second.
Was that a second from Bruce?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, first up, we have community services.
Good evening, everybody. I have a letter here from Candace Miller of First Bank of Monterey. I am here to request ten thousand dollars from ARPA funds. Met with the commissioners this morning and they gave their approval. This is what the food pantry looked like in December of twenty twenty-one.
Where's is that? It said at Francis or or where is?
This is here and not.
Oh, this is here.
Around this time last year in April, I told them my food pantry manager and I said, you know, I've been reading news articles about the economy and different things, and I think come September or October, we're gonna be having issues with the food pantry. We need to make a plan. Again, this was like the end of April. In June, this is what the food pantry looked like.
Where's that located at, dear?
Right across from the beauty college, around eight.
Okay, alright.
Yes, yeah, it used to be Council of Aging and Community Services, yeah. So needless to say, we had implemented plan real fast. So we did, and and we started doing media blitz, we contacted the churches, we looked for other resources, et cetera. The um, our main provider is the Northern Indiana Food Bank out of South Bend. We were getting four to six pallets every month from them. We now get maybe two pallets every two months from them. Um.
I have a question for you about that. I was thinking about, because I listened to the commissioners meeting today and I heard you mention that, too. They've been on the news a couple of times showing like a lot, but they have a lot of food, but like skids in their pictures. Like, are they just giving us less now in Stark County or what?
Well, I think what it is, is there there are, they serve a large region. You have to remember, they have South Bend, which is one of the largest cities in the in the state.
I get all that, but I mean, would that have changed? I mean, the populations have been pretty steady across Indiana. Why would they be giving us less now than before?
I don't know. I do know that the last time I went up there, it used to be when we got, when we would go up there, they have like a main room and then they have rooms on the side. And you get your stuff from the main room and then you could go on the side and get whatever extras you wanted or whatever. They no longer, those rooms are closed. They only have the main room now. They said they don't have the food for the extras or whatever. They're claiming that they don't have the food to distribute. So, I mean, I can't, I can't dispute them.
I just wanna make sure that it just sounded like you said Stark County is getting less than something that they were we were before. Just wanna make sure that.
To my knowledge, all all of everybody is from them. Yeah, that's not just Stark.
I'll have to call in next time they're doing their thing on television. And this is this letter of uh recommendation from Monterey. How much are they giving Monterey? I'm just curious, because I do a lot of banking work in Monterey.
Actually, um, she just called me the other day and said they have a thousand dollar donation for us, and she's also contacting all the other banks to try to get them to match it.
That's exciting.
Yeah, it is.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion from Tony?
I'll say.
Second. Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to cut you short.
No problem. I appreciate it.
Mr. Young.
Good evening, council. Uh, I'm James Young. Uh, I'm a town council member for the town of North Hudson, and I'm here this evening to talk to you about our uh town project we're doing with our town park. Uh, several years ago, we started the adventure with the county with Bass Lake, with the constellation of Stark, of working together on identifying projects we need to do. And uh in twenty twenty, we did a five-year comprehensive plan that identified housing, our downtown development and our parks as key areas of economic development. Um, so we've been working on those projects and right now we're working on our town park project. It's a three-phase project. Um, currently our redevelopment commission, um, it has put up five hundred thousand for this project. Um, we are working on a DNR grant. It's a fifty-fifty match, so we would also get five hundred thousand from DNR for this project. Originally, this was supposed to be a million-dollar first phase. The estimates have come back at a one-point-two-million-dollar project to get this done. Um, and so that's fine before the council tonight. Um, look for your assistance to help get this project done.
I listened to this on the on the uh commissioners meeting today. I guess one of the questions I have, well, you realize that we're talking about Wisconsin Constellation Stark, several of the entities came to ask us for money, couldn't like ask us for a new firehouse. We didn't do anything for that. I mean, you know, but they didn't ask for matching funds. They were, they asked for the full amount, but I hear this one. There have been others. I mean, we also have our own um assets that are park assets that need millions of dollars worth of improvement. I mean, each one of them, so I mean, I guess my my only question to that would be, or just wanted to make you aware of that, but my question that would be, so you're two hundred thousand short. But why are you not seeking some of that two hundred thousand from somewhere else besides just the county?
Well, I think this is a great opportunity to build a partnership with the county, or hopefully for some of the economic development projects moving forward. Anytime I think you can build synergy within a county, not just a a town, but you can work together. I really just think it speaks positively to leadership working cooperative.
I don't disagree. It's just we don't own that asset, you know, and this sometimes, you know, when you come to the council and, I mean, we've got skill that we we we've always, you know, had issues about, you know, the the assets that we don't own. I just, you know, I'm just asking you these shorts because I wanna be fair to all the other taxing units that we work with and all the other entities. In the past, we've had Hamlet Park ask for for money. I don't remember if White Oak has, but, you know, I mean, like I said, we have our own park assets. Do you understand that? I think like, so, yeah.
Okay, can I speak later, please? Um. Why couldn't the project be downsized to one thousand dollars?
Well, you know, the project, of course, it does have the scalability where we could bring it down. Again, this project, though, hasn't been accomplished in fifty years. And so we looked at it as, you know, is it a once-in-a-lifetime thing? That where we work together and try to do something. Again, parks, notability, we just had Ball State come in two thousand twenty-two. That's one of the main attractions for families, for young families to come to a community. We have brand-new housing. We just built across the street.
That's right. I know the guy that built it. I'm I'm friends with him.
Yeah.
And the other question I would have, what's gonna happen when this price, when the contract comes in way above the uh engineer's estimate? Because I work for a construction engineering firm, and there has not been one bid this year that has came in at the construction engineer's estimate.
Yeah.
They're all way older.
The construction engineer's estimate was originally one million, and the update it is one point two, which is why I'm saying before you can.
Yeah.
And it'll probably be one four, one five.
They raised the million dollars.
Yeah, I think they've done their legwork. Um, it's been a long, long time since that town has had an upgrade. And a lot of the residents outside of North Hudson that are in my district use that park. So this is something I would like to see happen.
The only thing I got to say, and and I have to with Dave, I've got so many phone calls about this. Because if we're gonna take this out of seat of money, correct me if I'm wrong, then everybody in the county pays into that.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment about that. I really would, because when, and there again, I I I get get historical, because I was there when we implemented the edit tax. And guys, this is exactly what Edit was intended to do. When we did the original survey, these were things that we thought would attract people to Stark County. Had you not had the COVID, chances are you'd you'd have had it home free. But um, thi- this is exactly what we intend for the edit money to to improve the 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 living of our our citizens. How many how many people do you think uh is attracted to that park?
That's a, that's a great question. I mean, you're talking Bali, you're talking uh families that not just live in the North Hudson. I mean, the school is half a mile away. So you're talking after school, you've got all sorts of kids that go to that.
The only park we have in this county that's even could be compared to yours is White Oak. And I'll tell you what, there there's a big attraction there, so.
Well, the whole town, the whole town of North Hudson is unbelievable. I mean, I was at Cassie's office the other day and I mean, honestly, the whole place, I like, I'm not discounting that. The only question I had was, why is the county doing it? Because we, on that with other funding, you know, why are we on the hook for the whole amount? And it's not a not a county asset, it's not a county taxing unit, but I would agree, does definitely fall in economic development without a doubt.
Well, and I wouldn't come to you, I don't mean to interrupt you. I wouldn't come to you if we were seeking the whole amount. You know, I'm I'm looking for a partnership of, we raise a million dollars, or we're we're, we get to one-point-two-million-dollar project. I'm looking for a partnership to say, hey, we can contribute two hundred thousand, so Town North Hudson can can make this happen.
Again, it's a, I just, I also wanna bring up, Sam Pierre needs a new firehouse. I'm telling you that. I mean, I was just there hopefully the other day with them, with their uh fish fry for four H and was talking to the guys, but I've known that for a long time, been in the fire business for a long time. Centennial Park in Sam Pierre, they wanna do some improvements. Um, our own asset at Bass Lake, we've got a project we're looking at, um, rebuilding the uh the beach house. We need an asset in Coons Lake. I mean, you know, we we've had all these things that are going on. I mean, you know, it'd be nice there when we've got the the county forest. I'm just saying, we've got a lot of projects. This would fit in with that. I'm just, I'm just reminding, though, that this be like, you know, because I've been around the council for a little while and, you know, it's gonna be a series now of 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 requests. I don't blame you.
Yeah.
I I understand what you're saying. People are officer for twenty-five years and lived off of grants, so.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying entirely.
Well, I think Bass Lake and others have a source of income. Uh, I, it would, correct me, is it CBC that collects the money for the motel room? Just because they're not a part of our park system, and I I don't, I don't, I don't get the gist of or the or the thought behind the park system, and 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 that's fine. I don't have to. But let me say that originally, we thought edit money in the tune of a quarter of a million to two-hundred-seventy-five thousand for the highway department. And that's up to what? Seven, three, three-quarters of a million dollars now, over half of what we've done. So, and I realized things change and and we evolved. The original survey showed that those were the exact projects that we needed to work on. So that's all I'm gonna say about it.
And it's uh, you 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 brought up several times on the guy that built the apartment. Does he pay for a lot of this, too? Is that why you keep mentioning?
No, I I just make mention of that just because it's, we have brand-new housing that's going in right by the park area.
But it's not, it's not government funded. He's he's gonna make money, this is right.
Absolutely. It's market rate.
I'm just trying to figure out why a private enterprise wasn't gonna be impacting that.
All I'm saying, when it, in regards to economic development, it's a primary that's.
We need, we need housing.
And I understand we need housing. That's what I was identified in.
I thought maybe you put in part of that other five hundred. Yeah, and which we contribute to that, too. Yeah. I just was thinking, maybe he did it like that. That would be just, you know, kind of.
He has helped in several, you know, like Start Tank and several of those things. And he's had, he has helped with a couple of smaller projects around down.
Well, I mean, if somebody's ready to make a motion, I mean, the bottom line, the commissioners already have endorsed it, right, in the meeting today? I mean, I was right, that's what I heard. We have a motion from Kay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, can she second come back? Sorry, I just wanted to make sure, Cassie, if you, you can still second me in on uh online. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'm going to support this. We talked on the phone.
Yes, sir.
I think for the good of the town of North Hudson and the and the and the surrounding communities, ten, fifteen-mile radius around your town, I'm gonna support this.
Thanks, sir.
But I am going to iterate what Dave said in the future. When we are requested money, and we will be in the future. We as board members need to be need to remember this, and we need to remember Coons Lake, Bass Lake.
Bass Lake, the city of Knox, the town of Hamlet.
Sam Pier.
Sam Pier, that's true to my heart. My wife's a Sam Pier. And over. We need to keep all this in mind. My point is, being in the future, we need to keep, and I'm I'm not necessarily addressing you, sir. I'm addressing my fellow councilmen. We need to keep in mind what we're doing for the town of North Hudson and act fairly with the rest of the county. I've said my piece.
Um one of the things I didn't ask is how soon do you need? Because here's another thing. Yeah. In my heart, and I've said this to the council, I'm only one of seven. Sure. But we're going to start having our solar revenue too. And really, I think that should, a lot of that money should go towards our parks and trails and things. How soon do you need the money for?
So we're, we're any day. We're waiting on the final test from DNR. So the sooner the better. We're shovel-ready come summer. So as soon as DNR gives us the green light come summer.
I thought you were shovel-ready now. Well, the project can start anytime DNR says, go. So it's shovel-ready now. Yeah.
All right. So we're going to eliminate it to 200, to the 200K. Is that your motion?
My question is, what happens if I 200,000 dollars, the project is not awarded, then the money can't go to them then? I agree with that. If the project does not get off the ground, the money falls back into our.
With the current motion, that wouldn't be considered a gift, would it? Or should we amend the motion?
I would amend the motion to signature on.
Yeah.
Okay, I amended to attention. It's uh that it doesn't, that it gets going, that it starts. Is that what we're saying? Okay, I thought it was April 30th.
Supposed to be any day we're supposed to hear.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, you you all know my stance. I'm not against the project, but I'm against the way of funding it. I don't feel that as a elected member of county money, I have got several phone calls about this and I will not support us giving them the arco. I'm only one person.
It's not our.
I mean, seated, my, I'm sorry. Because I'm only one person and that's the way I have been informed by my cons, my consistence to vote. And I got, didn't I get one phone call in favor of it? And this is the way I'm going to vote, vote it.
I don't say it really because I think that we're going to have other projects like Grovetown. They're, they're in dire need of of some investments in Grovetown. Uh if Sam Pier is the same way, uh let's use these funds to help the citizens of this county. We can't depend totally on this solar uh because.
We've got to check yet.
Well, that, that, and and the fact, what if technology changes tomorrow? You know, i- i- we might, we might be able to appreciate solar money for eight, nine, 10 years, but I don't, if if technology changes, we could, you know, we can't, we just can't really focus a whole lot on.
That's what. We, we have more for a second. Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying. That's why if the solar money would have been, that's all I'm saying. That would be great for projects. I didn't mean to make it a, make it a solar. That's why I asked. So this sounds more urgent, but I think the other projects, like for example, in our Bass Lake meetings, we're going to leave 500,000 if we get the grant for renovation of the park. Which now, you know, in comparison to the size of your project, that's not that bad, really. But, well, what I was going to say was, that, that would be good for. This is what, what I have as a, as a consequence, I would recommend because again, that money should go to exactly. Your, your comment, but then back to the council.
I know. I want to make sure that the council realizes that Stark Parks in 2023 are getting zero.
Seated. We took.
Or zero property tax. We're not getting any. All the money that's used in parks is raised at the, at the beach. So that's not in our budget?
No.
I thought last year was 30,000.
But it was seated. Yeah, we took that away. That was startup money. And that's to the point. That's why when it comes time.
And you, the gentleman in the back, his point is well-taken, what what I had said. There's going to be other, we're going to be asked for other funds out of, out of seated and we need to keep that in consideration.
And and just for my fellow councilmen and women, uh that's Tom Bush. He's on the park board. So.
What's his name?
Tom Bush. We work together quite a bit.
Are you, um, let's see, what, what's your mom's name? I forgot.
Patty, Patty. Are you Patty's son?
No.
Patty's, they're, that's the other Bush.
Okay.
I have a motion and then was that a second then?
Yes, I'll second the amended motion.
amended motion. Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
And is there any opposed?
Aye, all opposed, aye.
Okay, um, thank you. Thank you all very much.
I hope you get awarded, but thank you.
Family of North Hudson, we're going to be very appreciative.
Oh yeah, don't forget us on the ribbon cutting.
Well, I won't. I'll be invited to the ribbon cutting. I hope you go down the slide. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
And no, this is from Matt to talk about the paramedic chase unit.
Yeah, talk about it. Need changes in the EMS and.
And while you're handing that down, I think we're all aware of the shortfalls that we have in staffing. A lot of departments, the EMS has suffered a lot for that. I I do want to say though, Larry, because I, you know, I know you've talked to the council too, but we've talked, we talked originally when we came up with the ALS um promise to the county of using a chase vehicle then. So it's not really necessarily something new.
Right.
But I will say, because actually you and I talked about this and I mean, as long, my main thing is, is that if we use the chase that if I have a problem, whoever, if somebody I know, anybody in the county, that they still get ALS medical care. And and your approach was, this is the way to do that. I will say though, that there has been one concern, and I'm getting loaded up with text messages. Um there's a lot of concern though about only running one person at a base. Is that's going to be for sure, right? Well, you don't plan on doing that.
Only when we're short. And part of this, first thing I want to do is you've probably heard before, there's an EM shortage. Um roughly Indiana's 3,000 shore. Um that's numbers from last year. 2,000 paramedics, 1,000 EMTs. And the market has turned to competing against each other with the dollar.
We know we lost a lot. What I'm concerned about though is a, like I said, how does a chief, chief of fire, as you know, in the fire service a long time. We always talk about two in, two out. I'm just afraid like, is is there, I I don't even, are we allowed to operate that? Like, does.
Yes. However, I am approaching you for a couple of things. Number one is to hire or create the position for the medical driver. Um the medical driver will be used only when needed as a substitute on ambulances. Right now, I have 13 EMTs. I need 22. I have 13. I have major overtime going out. In my paramedic category, I actually have four paramedics. So with these numbers, you see where we don't have enough staff to go around. And someone has approached and with this, you are taking time. So that is leading us to limit staffing on ambulances.
Okay. So do you already know, like, one thing I didn't ask you, but then I heard the other day that like in some cases, for example, Kuntz Lake firesmen driving and. So have they already said, hey, if you pay me, I'll drive? Like, do we already, because if we approve this, I know the commissioners approve it, but like, if you don't already know that people are going to do it, it's kind of a moot point. Do you know that people want to do this?
I guess. I've already had three phone calls today. Asking where to get the applications and how soon can they start?
How many, how many transfers?
We used to do that.
How many transfers do we do out of Stark Memorial?
Right now, none.
No, okay. Because, because there's, there's, they have a responsibility in this too, because of the way that they're the way that they're set up is taking a lot of your uh.
Right.
For transfers.
They want to give us transfers. We haven't been taking any for the same time.
The why?
So we don't have a staff?
No, they don't have the staff to do it, but we, but we knew, I think we really need to talk.
Yeah, right. They want paramedics to do the transfers. I don't have paramedics. So that's where we're running into this.
But we, a couple of years ago, we funded, and I understand the staffing situation. I understand the staffing situation. But we've got a, we've got a rig that's, that's equipped and prepared to do this, right?
Right.
Okay.
However, back to that issue.
I understand.
We have proposed, um, proposed to the hospital that we will put up two EMTs if they can send a nurse. That will make it an advanced life support transport what they want. However, the hospital says they cannot afford the overtime. So they pan their transfers out to Tri-County from 7A to 7P. At night, the patient will remain in ER until Tri-County schedules. However, if it's an emergency transfer, life and death, we will send our only paramedic out on that call. We cannot justify somebody laying in the ER with a heart attack. We got.
What constitutes life and death? Because um I'm thinking of just several months ago when a fellow attorney of mine was in the ER for 24 hours basically dying and a transfer couldn't be found. So what's the definition here of life and death?
Life and death is, as it says, however, we do not go out of state. We have an issue with that. Um they want, first thing talking about that call, they never contacted EMS for a transfer.
Because they were, weren't they told not to?
They were not, by EMS, not to. So who told them? I don't know. Um the next thing is to take an ambulance, an emergency ambulance out of an area for how many hours is on fair to the taxpayer? That's where we're having our issues. When I move the Grovetown truck, that leaves that area to be covered by Knox. And they get Knox in Grovetown's area. So then we're down to two trucks. So we have a major issue with ambulances and trying to share it all. Um our guidelines now says that we will transport to LaPorte, Valpo, South Bend and Fort Wayne. Fort Wayne's the burn center in an emergency. If the helicopter cannot fly and they cannot get other transportation, we will initiate our guys to do it.
That was my, a question I had, life and death situation.
Yeah.
Isn't, if it's a, if it's a life and death situation, then wouldn't the first choice to be get them airlifted?
It is. And when we stop and look at our calls, when we get into a debate with the hospital on transfers, it's because the helicopter could not fly. That's where we're.
So your first choice in a life and death situation would be airlifting.
Airlift them fleet because we got great medics, but to take this person to our, well, I'm going to say an hour to Valpo is risky. We can do it, but we prefer to get them faster. So yes, and this is when the helicopter can't fly. Now, you know, we put this into effect and I want to say Christmas Eve, I got a call. Um hospital had to transfer one out with a low blood pressure. It was a snow emergency. As we recall, um it was one of those days, snow and icy. Our policy states that when we're in a snow emergency, we will not go. However, the hospital stated they did not have the medication to maintain the person until morning. We had to take her. So luckily, I got my best driver or EMT on the job. Put him behind the wheel, told him go slow. We got her up to LaPorte and back. She would have died if we didn't do it. Because helicopter would fly.
Well, I I think one of the concerning things is the miscellaneous revenue that we normally forecast for the transfers is going to be very painful, but I mean, we we need to start working on that soon.
We had a discussion, you know, not too long ago um about safety issues for our law enforcement officers, which are of paramount importance, no doubt about it. But here we're also talking about life and death situations for our friends and neighbors that live in our community. So to me, that is also just as cruc- crucially important as the safety of our law enforcement officers. Um to, yeah, I think this really, this needs to be addressed, whether it comes from, or whether we have to address some sort of um increase in pay so that we can actually staff our. Or I know, I think I've heard talk about um having the hospital start handling it uh as a private enterprise. I I have only heard just a a little like rumblings about that. So I'm not very informed about it, but either, you know, one way or another, this has to be addressed because it is just not acceptable for folks who are are tax-paying citizens to be sitting in the ER waiting 12 and 24 hours for a a transfer to Indianapolis, which I believe there was a child in the ER at the same time as um Attorney Bedrock who waited 12 hours to go to to Riley's Hospital. That's not out of state. Um this is, this is just, I I mean, I can't believe this kind of thing's happening in, in this country.
Yeah, well, I I think that's um what he's got here is the discussion on how to try to bridge some of that. I don't know what we do about transfers. Um so the pay increase for all EMS employees, we have something that.
Commissioners denied that.
Yeah, I was going to say, but we've, we may be talking about something for the future.
Yeah.
Uh as as far as the driver, they did approve that.
Yeah.
And then um paramedic chase unit, like you could do that anyways, right? Like, we don't have to do anything for that. You're saying.
Car, we have people.
So.
This is going to be in steps. So first step is to get our staff back up. If I take my medics off the truck right now, I have 300 more hours of overtime going out to build our position. So right now, with a lack of medics, the Knox truck will respond to where they're needed and meet with that incoming unit.
But this number four that says basic life support ambulance is, you're not talking about downgrading all of them.
That is the very, very last choice that we have. If nothing works.
So the paramedic chase though, can you still belt bill for an ALS though? Do you use a chase?
Yep.
Okay, so right now you're saying that you can do the chase, then you can fill the gaps by adding the driver that the the commissioners approved.
And so, so what's going to happen here is this driver is going to basically replace the paramedic on the, paramedic on the rig.
He's going to replace one of the, um, okay, state law does not allow us to put a paramedic and a driver together. That truck has to have an EMT and paramedic on it at all times. The basic life support trucks, which we're running now, has to have a EMT and a driver.
I understand that. So, so the other concern I have then is this will help, I I don't want our EMTs working alone. I'm just, I'm worried about that. The other thing is these new drivers need to have EVAC training.
Yes.
And so somebody's going to get the EVAC training right away when they get hired. That's the other thing. I mean, the highway department has to have driver training, fire departments, we do EVAC training. You've got somebody that can help you do that, get that done right away. Because the other thing I don't want to have is our ambulance is getting mirrors knocked off and wrecked and, you know.
I got a question, Dave. In the scenario, let's say it's 2 o'clock in the morning and you've got a, you've got a driver and a paramedic. I'm sorry, a driver and an EMT in a basic life support ambulance. A driver and an EMT. It's 2 o'clock in the morning. And it's a life and death situation and you need a chase unit to respond. Who's, who, who's the chase unit? Is there somebody on call or somebody that's.
A additional position of a paramedic at the Knox station with the.
So he's getting on, that would run county.
Only at Knox.
We, Knox is central, so what?
No, I understand. That's my question. So there will be a 24-hour somebody, somebody will be paid 24 hours if needed to chase the ambulance.
Right.
So do you have somebody in mind for this new position? Is there somebody available?
We want to hire emergency medical responders or first responders for the position. First responders are the only thing, couple of things that a first responder can't do that the EMT can is use a traction splint for a femur fracture. We don't use those no more. Those are faded out with EMS. Um use a device called a KED in a motor, automobile, sorry, motor vehicle crash. That's been phased out. We really don't use those. And to insert a non-visualized airway that is used for breathing. That is the only skill they cannot do. They can do the CPR. They can um splint, control bleeding. Um anything else they can do. Um, anything else they can do. So. We want the E M R. Uh, first responder, if you will, because. They're coming from the fire departments. They're exposed to the emergencies. And they'll be able to drive effective. Know what we're doing. They will have to go through an orientation class to know our equipment. So this is not gonna be, we're gonna throw them out there tomorrow and get going. This is gonna be that they have to train, they have to be able to drive, and they have to be able to assess their partner.
Does it say on here that they have to be an E M R? I just wanna make sure that's in this.
And I'm I'm kinda interested. I I'm kinda interested in the in the in this chase idea because I I know in the past. I know in the past. That the EMS director has has been provided a car and 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 I think part of their job title was to chase the ambulance in situations. And I I don't know that that's been effectively done. Again, I'm gonna paint another scenario that. I think I think it would be your job as the director to to enforce this. It. Listen, you you Sam Pier or let's use Coons Lake for an example. The the opposite ends of the county. And somebody. And you receive a call that somebody's having chest pain or it's a it it's a possibility of a life and death situation. The. The North Judson unit. Or the Coons Lake unit. Grover Town unit is en route to their directions. The check I would like to see, and maybe I'm stepping overstepping my bounds, Cassie, I think you'll agree with me, cause I this is really important to you as as you you've said. This chase unit, in my opinion, shouldn't sit there and wait till they're called. They should get in their car and they should head to Coons Lake or they should head to Sam Pier. It hasn't been in the past.
Yeah, it will be. We're not even to the chase point yet. First thing we gotta do is right now, I gotta get staff on that truck. If I don't get staff, we are shutting down ambulances.
But we're also gonna try to always staff with paramedics when you can.
Yes. No, we're not making them out. The drivers is a temporary solution. What I would like to do is take these drivers. Place them into E M T class. Where they can come and work with us more. Same time. We get our. Staff back up to par where we have the ambulance's staff. We keep our paramedic on the Knox truck because like I said, if I take. That person out, that's three hundred hours of overtime filling him with my stash shortage. So. Once we get the staff up. We got. Staffing looking good, overtime cutting coming down. Will turn around and look at the chase unit. And at the chase unit phase, we'll hire more E M Ts to fill the spots. And then use the chase unit. To cut. Medic pay. Right now. You know, pros and cons to the chase unit, but our medics are also in overtime trying to fill the schedule.
Well, we have a recommendation from the commissioners. They've already approved this. And this helps us, you know, not have people work alone. I I more I'm right now, I'm I'm more worried about that. I mean. The pay rate was thirteen, right? That will be adding up to the.
Yeah, um, I also, before we vote on this, I also wanted to ask about. Uh, the EMS policy and procedure manual. I'm assuming there is one and I wondered if the board. Or the council has access to a copy. If if not, could that be emailed at least to me? Okay, thank you.
And it's all, it's all reviewed by a medical director as well.
And I just wanna clarify, the twenty two physicians. Right now consists of eleven paramedics. And eleven E M Ts. So he technically has thirteen E M Ts on staff now, but really it was only eleven and eleven. Is what was approved by the commissioners.
Yeah, sorry, I messed that up with my notes. Yeah, this is not like a lot of people need to think about it.
Did you wanna continue with the motion, Bruce?
I do. Um, we need him. We need him, right?
So the other solution is. Money.
Yeah, but right now, I think this is all I wanna do. And I'm like, Cassie, I'd like to hit, but I'm. I'm an old guy, so I'd like to have my hard hard copy of that.
Was there anybody that wanted to give a second on that?
I'll second that.
The second from Cassie and then I think we had enough discussion. All those in favor, aye? Is there any opposed? Thank you, Larry. You're up next, Cassie.
Hey, um. I don't have copies of the paperwork in front of me because I'm out of town. However, um. I was made aware a while back of an issue regarding the zip through mart in Knox. Um, I have. Provided uh Attorney Shram with copies of documents I obtained from the recorder's office. Uh, from Mandy Thompson. And I believe a copy should have been provided to each of you. Um. I'm a little bit baffled here as to why prime commercial property on U S thirty five is being rented for two hundred and forty dollars a year. And uh there uh I I'm interested to see what Attorney Shram might have uh come up with from reviewing the documents. But it looks to me like that building is currently not being used uh pursuant to what was agreed to. Way back when, I think it was in the nineties. Um, and then additionally, I believe the agreement was uh executed by an Evelyn Eastock, who I believe is now passed away. And the Airport Board of Commissioners or the Board of, it's the Airport Board. And it just seems like a. I I'm not clear on the role that the Airport Board plays in all this with the hospital tied in and that property somehow being tied into the hospital. As well, but all I know is that if we're looking at. Uh, protecting our citizens and our taxpayers, um, I think that charging. Charging a fair market value for commercial property on Route thirty five would definitely. Uh, be fair to the taxpayers.
Mr. Shram, have you had a chance to review this?
Yeah, I was a little confused when I received um Cassie's email, so I said it'd be brought up on record, cause maybe. I don't wanna say in nineteen sixty seven was twenty two years before I was born.
Yeah, smarty pants.
She's not wrong. I mean, two hundred and forty dollars a year. I it's it's a bit confusing. There was two leases. There was one was a lease, the other I think was a lease with the. Building corporation of the hospital. I'm not sure what that one was, but the first one we're talking about, I'm. I'm confused to the purpose, what it was designed to be used for, what it is being used for, with the airport, cause the airport used to be where Five Star was.
Oh, yeah, that's where the airport.
That's where the airport was originally until probably not now, right?
He was looking at me like I was around then.
I was.
I was.
I was. I remember going there. Yeah, it's it's a strange lease, something granted back in nineteen. I mean, you see it was recorded ninety six, but it was executed in sixty. Um, which I mean, it's I not out of a realm of pop, but I, you know, I'm confused as to, you know, because it talks about, doesn't talks about. Talk about with the use of the leases and say it may be used for a restaurant. It doesn't say it shall be used for a restaurant.
That's what it was. Originally, it was a restaurant.
Yeah, well, I guess my point being, maybe it's just something that Cassie and I, when you're talking about maybe it's a shout, it can be used for a restaurant, it doesn't say it has to be, but the fact that it's sitting vacant. And now, and you know, the lease is also in the name of somebody that is deceased presumably. Um, you know, so now you have a. I didn't see it here. I didn't see a survivorship section.
Yeah, Justin, I was gonna ask, since I don't have it in front of me, is was there anything that says it's binding on heirs, successors or assinees or anything like that? And also is there a, does that contract actually have a term on it? Because I've had this issue come up in my practice just this past week. Where there was a contract with no set term and according to the case law, I'm finding that contract is uh terminable at will by either of the parties. So I I don't recall if I saw a a term on that or a re- I think of if there's an option to renew. That counts as um. Uh, towards the the actual term, but.
Yeah, no, there there was a, there's an assignability section, so whoever's making the payments now can, I I suppose, make the argument, but it's only for one additional year term on top of the original. Five year term, so. Yeah, so that, you know, can be terminated. You know, presumably, uh. You know, with with proper notice, I I mean, there is no section that says it, you know, it's it's. Uh, you know, binding on on successors or assigned. It does say it can be assigned, you know, to this somebody else.
Okay, but not that it is binding on successors, meaning succeeding successor boards, county councils.
I bet that presumably, again, after the first five year terms, that would have ended in seventy two, would have just been then automatically renewed from year to year.
Unless somebody.
Unless somebody terminates.
Because I will say this. Every time that I've ever had a discussion with the hospital. They always say that a big decision for them to stay on that piece of ground has to do with that piece of property and. They, and this is no offense, cause I I see it's very useful. A lot of people buy their goods there, but. They hate the fact that they are a health entity and there are cigarettes being sold on there. Right next to them, or the same.
So, I mean, I guess this is kinda up to you guys. I can tell you what your rights are, could we agree? If you guys wanna do something with it, I just, I didn't know what way to take this because I guess I didn't know what you guys were thinking.
Obligation to taxpayers, we have to do something with that. Yeah, if there's something to be done, we have to do it. We're lucky to do it.
Davis, what's one like two cents a square foot? It should be more like about seventy five or eighty dollars worth, but.
And then at least we know too that. It sounds like with what Cassie's uncovered, that if it does come to the point where it's push or shove, we're gonna build a hos- we're not gonna build a new hospital here. If this is here, if we can't have this space, then we. Notice to quit.
We know who is op- who's operating this piece of parcel now. I mean, again, these people that originally signed it were deceased, as long as I know who.
It's my, from my um involvement with that property in the past with an eviction of a former tenant, it was Dennis C. Stock.
Okay.
Dennis or.
It was Dennis who evicted uh Shelley Mann's when she was running the Pizza King, from my recollection. She had the Pizza King in there and then it was used as a food service establishment, but. She was evicted.
Pursuant, I think you have the responsibility to do it. We definitely had the responsibility to do it.
Or if you tell me to do it, then I will do it. I just wanna, I wanna.
I'll I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Would you like to second that, ma'am?
Yes, I'll second it.
We have a mo- Tony Blackbeak, you have motion and a second. I assume without discussion, all those in favor, aye? All in favor, Rachel. Um, so. With EMS lit tax, so. I, you know, and you heard Larry talking about some of the issues he had. Um, we had Baker Tilly do a little, Tilly do a little study for us to kinda get some kind of idea. If we did, you know, try to raise some funds. What if it costs a taxpayer? Uh, but that was the main impact of what we wanted to know because lid. For those that are here and those that are on Zoom or, you know, for the media. The I T part, it's key contact. And so what we're looking to do is try to find a way to bridge something. Uh, without making a huge. Impact to the taxpayer now. Far as property taxes, obviously, you know, we wish that we would get some windfall. Housing business, numerous things that would raise um property taxes, but. Um, it doesn't help us short term. And then we talked about one option was a public safety tax, which we could enact. Um, and raise a lot more money, more difficult to go backwards. Another option um that we had Baker Tilly look at for us is an option that where. We could do a lit tax that's just specifically for EMS. And um depending on what amount, what rate we set that at, we could take that amount. Of EMS, move that into the lit tax and use that money. Well, we have two issues that are going on. The one issue was, we talked about possibly trying to find. Uh, an increase um. For pay. And one of the things I will say that. When I've mentioned this before, I I misspoke, I shouldn't say across the board, for those that the. Office holders and supervisors want to raise one or all, that would be their decision. I I don't wanna make it sound like, you know. Uh, you know, we're we're trying to help fund it, but I don't know individually every single person. Um, you know, in certain situations, there, you know, uh, one of the chief positions could have a lot of extra responsibilities or whatever, so. Um. But the other thing is we have a shortfall for nine one one. And it's about a hundred and seventy five thousand. Um. I did talk to Jim Pressle, uh, and I know some of you have as well, but I talked to Jim, Kendall, Mike Bahasic. They haven't raised the nine one one tax in over ten years. Like, I think. Down the line, that's another way to help this. The other thing is, is, you know, one of the, you know, like Bruce brought this up earlier as well. We need to somehow. We're gonna get EMS back on the rails one way or the other, either. Getting staffing back up and, you know, better billing practices or an alternative, possibly privatizing, whatever, but. The one thing that EMS lit tax um uh has a benefit of is that we would reset that rate every year. We could repeal it. Um, you know, and if and if we tried to target like five years down the road, whatever, to try to get figured out what's going on with EMS theoretically, we could roll that back and then. Move the funds back around.
So if we were to approve such a tax, it would be. Eighteen months before we'd actually start collecting any of this, correct?
No.
It would, we would start collecting it in October of this year and we would start receiving payments in January.
So you're saying sick uh eight months from now, we could be or. Whenever the taxes are, property taxes are due.
Yeah, so it doesn't have to hit those cycles.
I see, I see. I'm sorry.
On the, I know a lot of you were interested about how it affects the taxpayers, so on the. Fourth page of your Baker Tilly. Exactly what the taxpayer would pay.
So like, for example, we had been kicking around point two one. Cause that was gonna raise us like nine twenty to eight fifteen. Somewhere in that range. And that that's enough to cover. The point two one is enough to cover the shortfall in nine one one and.
In the point two one that.
Actually, we actually, we only need twenty twenty, but.
Yeah. Here's, 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 here's my thought. My, here's my thought on this. The need is definite. I'm more asked. Instead of what, make it a point two one. Make it a point one zero. And make up the rest of it with ARPA money. Cause we're giving that money away like it's nothing. So if this is what ARPA money was made for. In this way, it would be a less of amount. A lesser burden on the taxpayers and we would still. We would still get the same amount of money that we would with the tax rate. We wouldn't be cutting anybody short. But we'd be using that ARPA money. For what it's made for. That's my thought. Doesn't cut anybody short. Just cause a different option. Instead of raising people's tax that much, we're actually raising it a hundred percent less than what we were. That's my thought.
Yeah. Uh, I'm gonna give my thoughts. Fifteen minutes ago, we just gave the town of North Judson and I support it and I don't renegal on that. I still support that. We just gave the town of North Judson two hundred thousand dollars out of ARPA money. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I stand corrected, ceded money. And we've been pretty generous with handing out. The ARPA funds. And we just spent a, a lot of ceded money tonight. We're spending, we're spent, we spent two hundred thousand dollars on ceded money. That that's non-critical. Um. My point is. I am not in support of raising the Stark County taxpayers. Income zero. I I cannot support any, in in these economic times, I cannot support a a tax increase. At all. But what I can support is possibly using. ARPA money. A combination of ceded money. In the situation that that funds this shortfall. Until and until we do get possibly, and I know we talk about this an awful lot and we haven't received our first check. Nor I know that we will receive a check, but solar money. So I can support this if we use something other than. I am. For raising the taxpayers' income zero. I can't support raising. Anybody's payroll tax.
Howard pretty much just voiced uh what I had been thinking. I hadn't been. Howard pretty much just voiced uh what I had been thinking, I hadn't been thinking about uh supplementing ARPA with seated, but I think that's.
I I don't even know if we need to supplement with seated yet, then, one of the things we could do is do one full year of this, start at January first. Here's the thing, we have to appropriate the rest of the ARPA money by next year and spend it by twenty six, so I mean. We could fund the first year, we could fund next year with ARPA, let's do, let's do that, then, yes, let's agree, but like I said. I just want to make sure that what we do is. I mentioned that ten percent across the board before, I didn't, I misspoke on that, what we do is, we look at each position. So and. Go that route.
So so Rachel, are we, are we, are we sure on that seven hundred fifty thousand dollars amount, right?
If you wanna increase payroll by ten percent.
Seven twenty eight.
It was seven twenty eight.
Okay.
But that does not include this hundred seventy five thousand dollar shortfall for dispatch this year. So that has on top of that.
There you go.
Well, I I think this is the way to do it.
Eight hundred, nine hundred.
So how many, how much? All the way through.
Well, that's nine hundred total.
Well, we're, and we're talking about raising what, seven percent salaries across the board?
Ten, not across the board, the pot, the pot that that payroll come there. The whole pot by ten percent, the office holders decide, maybe some aren't gonna take it, and we'll just raise the rest, but the whole amount by seven twenty eight. The whole payroll by ten percent.
We do this for what, just a year or two?
Well, we started with one year with ARPA, but I mean, we'd have to fund it after that, that's the thing is.
And that's kind of.
Could be solar.
And and like everybody, you know, I don't want to raise taxes, I mean, again, I make a pretty good wage, and buy tax and go up just like everybody else, but I feel like the. Issues we're facing today with inflation, I don't see us ever warming it back, I don't see this money ever. Stop, you know, I mean, just what are we gonna say, two years, you guys, you're gonna go back down to your pay or?
Well, I I think there's, there there's some hope of some other things can happen through um better efficiency. That may help limit, not not directly to the service department, it may be limited, it may limit some of the amount. Uh revenue, I hate to use the word revenue, because we're not a business, we don't make anything, the money that we collect. From the taxes that we pay could be increased possibly.
Yeah, so here's my thought, Todd, I'm like, it's not a bad, bad um path you're going down, so my thought would be then. We're getting ready to start budget workshops next month. With most departments, I mean, some it's a no brainer, I was trying, I I don't, I don't want to make the other office holders nervous, like, everybody doesn't have to worry about budget workshops, it's really just the big ones. So we're gonna look at your budget too, and most of the time, we make the decision that we're just gonna decide, you know, based on your spending and. You know, over the year, you know, your usage, but then I think the approach would be is, every office holder increases their. Um budget, their payroll budget up to ten percent. And then we base the final number on that, maybe not everybody's gonna do it, maybe not, maybe not every positions are gonna decide it. But we have those people in leadership roles, because they know their own personnel. Like I said, you know, like, I could. I could speak for a few, because I know they do, you know, things outside, I mean, especially when it comes to emergency services, that's the kind of thing that I know more, I'm starting to learn more about the highway department, but. You know, um not enough to only say, oh, I think this driver deserves that, or whatever, I mean, I work with dispatch a lot, so I know that some be more than others. I know in the law enforcement, you know, some be more than others.
So we're saying seven hundred fifty thousand, what's, what's the shortfall?
Nine hundred thousand. Um, okay, ten percent payroll, seven hundred twenty eight thousand. The shortfall for nine one one, I estimated about a hundred and seventy two thousand.
But that's the million dollar, almost a million dollars in our one year.
Right now, about two point five million in lost revenue, so you could sustain it for two years if you wanted to.
Well, I mean, one thing we can see first is to see if it helps the um. You know, helps the staffing, you know, on the turnover. Theoretically, you will, I mean, ten percent is not a, because it's not a bad amount, you know, unfortunately, I'm not gonna say.
There, there's been a comment made that if we throw money at it, everybody else is gonna throw money at it. So that makes it all moot point.
Well, you know.
I hope that's not the case.
But I I I talked to uh Jim Pressle about that, he said, you know, but there's a limit for that, cause I was talking about how the Port County has stole some of our really good. At least one of our good officers that I know of.
There, there's fact, fact books out now from the AIC that gives you the pay of all governments in Indiana. And I mean, where we are in our population, if you did the ten percent, it gets us up to what we're at. Compared to other counties in our same.
Yeah, we're just like Fulton. Last guy. Cast, yes, Jasper.
Jane.
We're never, we're never gonna be able to compete with Leport County, possibly Marshall County.
Compared to your own population.
So so for now, does somebody want to make a motion to table on the EMS lit? I'll come, I'll combine, combine a motion that we're gonna have to attack the office holders and supervisors, look at ARPA, up to a ten percent increase in our payroll.
There, there is, there is, there is a point too um. What about, obviously, we're gonna have an increase in retirement on that too, because the, because the wages are gonna go up.
Eleven point eight percent.
Well, longevity, I mean, that was what's all that figured into.
Well, left, left, you say eleven percent?
I, yes.
So it'd be, so it'd be nine hundred ninety thousand, but I think we should worry about that ninety thousand right now. Yeah, I'll make a motion to the table, the uh lit tax.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed?
Well, I'll make a motion if nobody else will, but I just wonder exactly how we do as a group of this.
It'll be ARPA loss revenue.
Yeah, we are here. I I made a motion that for one year, we use nine hundred thousand dollars of ARPA loss revenue money. To. To increase the pay. Of the entire county employees.
For twenty twenty four.
For point twenty four, that's what I said, one year, one year.
Up to, yeah, one year, yeah. Not up to ten.
I didn't say.
Let's just, let's just make sure.
Okay, it's the pot, okay, I'll make a motion that we appropriate nine hundred thousand dollars out of the ARPA. Out of loss revenue category to go to the pot. To to give all the county employees a raise up to ten percent, and determined by their, their department heads and approved by us.
It's a very long motion.
So, so.
I got it.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I second it.
Uh we already, we already got one, okay, sorry, um so just quick discussion, and just so there's. I want to make sure that everybody in the board is agreement with this, because I think this is what we talked about. The office holder or supervisor will get, submit us a budget up to ten percent increase in our overall payroll budget. If they don't want to take it, they don't have to take it, just so they'll know with that whole number, so the maximum number is nine hundred, they'll distribute it how they see fit. Is that what everybody's understanding is in motion, because it is a long motion?
But, but it's our.
Uh you can't, no, that's.
I said, I I put in the most with our approval, but it is the.
You are still gonna be approving.
Would, would, would you like me to?
In favor, aye? Uh we have one letter. Only for the alcohol board appointment, a move that we accepted.
I wonder about that.
Her title, they won't allow her on that.
I wonder.
She, okay, yeah. He is in a position of power.
You're gonna get free beer. Okay, so we have one, which is Gwen, which is, uh I don't, this is the Gwen that works in the surveyor's office. Have a motion from Bruce, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um. Does anybody have any board reports? I'll start with something, maybe they'll get some other voices going then, um. On the economic development side, we recently had a meeting about broadband um. And it's interesting, uh we finally got a number that we've asked that many times, that we about what it might cost, but the. It could cost around forty five million dollars for most people to get uh fiber from Stark County, but what we learned was. Most of that could be covered by grants, where we would have a very small uh contribution, so um.
I think your point though, Dave, you were talking about that not everybody has to have hard cable to their house.
Well, I think some won't, like you talked about some that were like six miles apart, you know, and stuff like that, so.
So that could reduce that figure, couldn't it?
Yeah, possibly, but I don't know if we can help those people out somehow with a radio. I don't know, I don't know what we can do.
At least the discussion was started.
And then uh if people are still thinking about their, if they have any from their boards that they've been to, um. Don't kill the messenger on this, this is up to you guys, but we just needed to bring it back up, because Rachel had contacted a company for me, the reason why this says plaque. Um, is that I just mentioned. That there's, like, for me, being on a council so many years, I've worked with a lot of different people, they have other positions. But. A memorial plaque I had brought up before with their names on it, um and I don't know how far we go back, maybe twenty thirty years, I don't know, to the beginning, I I don't know how you do it. Um, but I just wanted to throw it out there, they did it at the highway department, I don't know if you've seen it, it's really nice. Um, but I just need to let the lady know, you know, the uh we contacted Otis. And she just wanted to know if it was interesting in it or not. I never asked for the number on it, I was thinking, well, maybe just paying for it myself, but. Um, we hardly ever spend any money on the council, so I just thought it was a nice way to remember some of the people that at least I've served with.
I I do have, I I do have a board of sort of sorts, um. I'm part of the um the Veterans Memorial. They appear through, through the legions, I represent Hamlet, and um. We want some flags, you know, the, part of Park Department, I believe the Park Department has no money budgeted for that memorial, am I right?
Yeah, so what usually happens is, the um Northern Indiana Community Foundation has about thirty five thousand dollars.
Yeah, but we only have, we only have a hundred and seventy eight dollars available out of that, because it's all, it's all invested. It's CD, so it's original.
Share some line for Memorial Day flags.
They they do, they've got them for the, for the graves.
They, yes.
But I'm, but I told them in the meantime, I would, I would reach out, maybe they self, reach out to the council's office, and be able to do this, the US side, maybe zoom for capital. And.
Like the VFW that?
Yeah, and they're gonna reach out to Pressle. It's just something to think about, I know they have, they had a problem, they're already speaking, they had a problem with the lights already. It was almost a thousand dollars. For the lights, but it got taken care of. It went out, just like they do, but the lights are only two years old.
There's a courthouse maintenance fund.
Yeah, I know, that's what I said, they got taken care of. Okay, so I just relax to know that, that's all.
And then um I just wanted to report back to, I did go to the uh, the Marshall Stark Development Board meeting, um my last meeting, and explaining to them. What we had going on, they're uh excited. Uh at least the, the director uh knows Tony, so Tony will be uh moving forward with that.
And I think you're probably, I think it's a good idea, Dave, you're thinking out on that, I think it's a good idea.
Do uh, you know, I, like I said, I, I'm I'm more thinking about my predecessors, I mean, I've served on here with some pretty amazing people.
We have a small county, it's just nice to see some of this stuff walk in and building.
What was the one at the? You know how much they cost? Oh, the jail, see there, can you uh maybe get a quote for us, and then maybe next time?
It'll be whatever your wood cost.
That'd be like five thousand dollars now.
As I say, considering what the locks were, better, better than five thousand.
That's a good idea.
Well, maybe you, you just want to talk. Figure out how we can.
Yeah.
That's, that's excellent.
I'll think about talking.
Actually, since we're kind of on miscellaneous things too, when we were. When we were in the glove factory the other day, um and we were look. This isn't really a board report, but I want to give you an update on um. Uh, city court. So like, we've kept all that in process, and we've been having some meetings, um the sheriff, myself, and then some other logistics wise, some other people. Um Angie, you know, just talking to her about, you know, we don't want to just wait till the last day to figure everything out. Many people have things at the glove factory that can be thrown out and destroyed, I'm looking at, I'm looking around at the whole.
At a public or a shred event last year, and you wouldn't believe how much I got rid of then.
I'm just saying, you're the one that knows how to organize that, maybe you can help plant the bug in the courthouse, because I saw stacks of stuff up there that was old. And other departments that I can't even believe they had some of the stuff that's in there.
Come up to the attic and see all the.
I went with you to the attic also, and remember, I asked everybody.
Their mats up there, the way I remember.
But I asked everybody to start cleaning out the attic, Rachel sent the notice out, can we send a notice for everybody to take a look where they have the glove factory, we need to move things around? Tony, there are some old benches there, um Tony, I looked at him, and he's gonna have this, uh the guys at the jail refurbish them, they're really cool old antique. Benches and uh um the jail's gonna refurbish those, so we can put them around the county. And then honestly, like, there's some antique radiators in there, we could sell those items, people pay that, have wood boilers, they pay big money for those, there's probably twenty of those, like. There's some stuff we can sell there too, and make some room. Yes, please, and then also, the people getting around to look at everything they've got stored over there, like, we need to downsize, but there is plenty of room there. There's a couple of desks that look like it might work for her, so she's gonna. Uh pare that down, so we can just make sure, one of them says save on it, I think they might have been old judges furniture, I don't know why it says save, it has nobody's name on it. But then we found some more modern ones, but the plan is, um in city court, they have working files. Um and then they have files that she can go in storage to get if she needs to, it's a pretty big room, I think you saw it, it's.
There's always records retention too, and she can.
Yes, so like, I just want to let you know, that's all in process, but we do, are gonna need a little space, what we did see though, is the pallet racking that's there, if we could consolidate. Get rid of some of the garbage, we may even be able to move it around, not have to buy new right away, start to store some of those things, but the goal is not to wait till the last day. We did find uh an old door there, some of us met too at the courthouse. Or I'm sorry, our justice center, and we're gonna uh put city court office in the corner of the building, um it was originally originally a visitation room. They talked about buying a split door, but we found a really nice door, the glove factor that has an opaque window on it, that has a mail slot. And then they're gonna make an L shape with those desks, and so that way somebody can't, you know, like, just walk into their office, but. Anyways, I just want to let everyone know, there's a plan for city court, and um it looks like things are going smoothly, the sheriff and. Other staff from the sheriff's department have been very friendly with Angie about, you know, planning that, so. A lot of what moves forward is gonna be handled between Tony, um and their new facilities guy, Ronnie, over at uh at the city, but. It's, it's underway, um the last thing that I personally have is, Dave's here from Hamlet. We've already talked about them, been able to request up two hundred seventy five thousand, but he just wanted to share some of what's been going on, I've been talking to um. Kevin Linebaugh, um the uh facilities director in Hamlet, and and he's been doing a lot of work, talking to the tower people, so. A big chunk of that money, as I mentioned before, is gonna be spent on um preserving the tower, getting a few things that it needs, but that way it's ready to go. Uh when it's time, just today, I got a contact for the, to. Uh be able to market the property with this uh Economic Development Foundation, trying to get a buyer too, so I finally have a contact at Cisco too. So hopefully, we'll still see someone to buy it and get something down there, but do you want to share uh any?
Well, what we wanted to do is, is we wanted to request the one set, the full one seventy five, because we do have, uh we did get the grant, community crossings grant to repave Stark Street. We are gonna repave uh replace. Spot put uh spot replace sidewalk, and and some of the, there's a possible, I think there's a. Couple items where we can do, some, there's some damaged curb they're gonna repair. Um, we, we've had a uh contingent plan of uh lighting up Stark Street with the antique lights as we started. Um, it went from one or two phases to about several, because the cost of the lights, but. We were advised that the lights are no longer in production, and they have twenty five, they're holding for, it's the last of them. And I have a quote for everything is uh just the lights alone is seventy six, one seventy nine. That's not including any electrical conduit we have to buy.
No, Justin has to do an ordinance. So I reminded him to do it today.
Okay, Justin still had to do the ordinance, but I mean, it's dedicated to you, so.
And then, you know, we got one initial quote for the tower, just to, you know, some of the shoddy work that was done to the tower, as you're aware, as I told you, you know, um. You know, the the valve, the main valve that's in there. We're just looking at just from basic inspection stuffs, it's, it's, it's just ten thousand dollars and, and it's not like, it's one of those things. And it's not like, it's one of those things, it's, it's like when you tear into it, it's, it's when you're gonna find more, so it's not like, it's, it's ninety hundred dollars to start. Even gave me this crazy schedule in here, how much they charge for all their different services, so things can.
Well, you know, Hamlet's another place too, like, it's getting better and better, I just, that one building on the corner, I still have a contention with that, hopefully we could do something. The old dealership. Bruce, now, no offense to you.
I absolutely do.
I would love to see something painted on there.
Boy, I should buy, I'd then make a great old car hangout.
Yeah. Ah, easy blockchain, did, did we ever take the building off of that, cause the fire department wanted that for a trader's building. Let's look into that, yes. They still pay the rent, maybe they'll give the building away, you can get the contact from Larry, or you already have it?
No.
So.
Easy blockchain. Easy, Hamlet Fire Department was interested in that, uh, structure that's on the easy blockchain property, they still pay their rent. Maybe they would donate that to the fire department, I'm thinking, but I don't know if we have a contact for them, or.
I would, I would check with, uh, Lisa, cause I've been out of there for what, a year and a half or two and a half, I don't know what it is. If she doesn't have it, I've got contacts from the guys I've talked to at that time, they, they'll check with her, for her.
So David, um, all we're waiting on, uh, is Justin hasn't gotten the ordinance yet, so at the point, at, at this point, it's been approved for Hamlet, so. If you could just submit your request to Rachel, everything else is done.
Send an email, okay?
Uh, can you send an invoice? For a hundred seventy five thousand dollars? And then most likely, it'll be paid out May fifteenth.
And, and then I have one other thing that might be, I don't wanna cause any sore spots here, guys, but you can see that. You know, Justin tries to stay as long as he can, but I'm just asking, can we go back to four thirty? Could we change days? Looked at changing days and it just doesn't work for anybody. Well, can you do the electronic part though, starting at four thirty, I mean, just so we can get Justin out of here quicker?
Driving on the road.
I'm more concerned about our, our, our citizens, I realize a lot of them don't come, but. We used to have our, uh, years ago with seven o'clock, I'm not saying that that's.
Something, I, I honestly think people go to bed so early, cause they work now, that I don't think people will come in like. Cassie?
Yes?
Uh, you, you, you had to, we were just talking about the fact that we had to send Justin running out of here again too, and I, I honestly don't wanna risk in driving. The Judson, trying to make it, cause he's always said he will accommodate us first. But a courtesy of North Jonathan, courtesy to, to, uh, to Justin. I mentioned going back to four thirty, but, uh, the, the question was about the days of the week, and. I know that there was some issues with that before, but which, which days did you say that you could not do?
Uh, every, or the, I have Wednesday obligations with Hamlet, since I'm their town attorney. Uh, but every other night of the week, I'm pretty much available.
Well, Friday then. Cause Thursday doesn't work.
If we do it on Friday, just because, I, I mean, I guess, as long as I can attend by Zoom, it doesn't matter, we can do it on.
You have something on Thursday. No, I used to have bingo at the firehouse. Thursday?
Thursday?
Well, I'm fine with Thursday.
How about Thursday, Cassie?
That should work.
What about Justin?
Yeah, we have. That was the thing is.
Let's ask Justin when.
Thursday at. Uh. Five o'clock.
I would like to see it where we could get more. Somebody gets home from work, so they drive an hour, they get home at five, they can maybe grab a bite, eat, shower, and come to us, and come to a six thirty or seven o'clock meeting. If we're gonna change the day lately. It's fine. Well, I, I just think we owe it to the taxpayers. I, I think four thirty's, I've always thought that was too early.
I can do six.
That is seven o'clock dust this time, is the only reason, you know.
I understand.
It's, and, again, Justin has always been accommodating, so I'm not trying to act like he's a prima donna or anything with, without him being here. He will stick with this, I'm just concerned about the guy having the speed there, I mean. He left our meeting today, and a stupid turkey hit his mirror and smashed his finger on his car.
Why don't we? We have to make a decision tonight, why can't we talk with them and see what, if Thursdays work with them?
Well, she said.
Rachel said it does.
Thursdays. Yeah, I think it's just the time.
I like, I, I like Howard's idea to, or suggestion of doing it a little later, so that at least, even though the public might. Still not attend, at least they would have a better opportunity.
They got the opportunity, right?
I think less people come, I just, I've been doing this so many years, I, I, I think less people come, what time's your guys?
That's even kind of a struggle, a lot of people are still at work, and. Got things to do with the kids running, you know, that's. Practice and all the school activities usually in five thirty, six o'clock.
All right. Let's take a vote. Option A is six o'clock, raise your hand.
Yeah.
Three, four for six, and then the other one I was gonna say was seven, so.
Uh, they gotta do.
Yeah, eight first. I was gonna say five for each one. That's, I would, I was gonna vote five. But that's on a two, um, all right, I'll stop.
Third Thursday.
So it'll be the third Thursday as opposed to. I will say, it does help me with. Um. Was there anything else from the audience?
Some of the storage, that's why I've been working on getting all the scanning done, so we can eliminate a lot of the storage. So, right, back in front of you guys, keep that in mind.
And Dan, just so you know, I'm not talking about any of your storage area, I, I already said, we're not gonna mess with that. The only thing we might have to do is sometimes park the sheriff's department, um. Golf cart in your area, but it's only a golf cart. So, we're not asking to move any of the other stuff.
Years ago, there was a neat oak desk that come out of the original. Uh, county school superintendent's office, is that? The desk, cause we, we saved that many moons ago, is that still there?
Write the word save on the back of that paper, let me see if that's your handwriting. I'm sure it was Michael Lane that wrote that. Tell you what, Bruce, why don't we get together sometime, I go over there, just so you can maybe date some of that stuff that's there.
You know, you know, this is seventeen. This is something, cause the commissioner's probably a little bit, if we've got desks, and we've got things that's been in there for twenty years. Let's have an auction and get rid of it, let's sell it.
Yeah, I agree, I'm with you, and, some of it has some value too, like I said, people that have those outdoor wood boilers, they buy those old iron, um, radiators. There's probably twenty of them over there.
If we don't sell it, it's gonna be there another fifty years.
Are they copper? I think they're all iron, but there could be a copper one over there, other checkers.
I'll watch out this time.
You don't wanna mention the Freedom Ride?
Oh. No, we've got a. But a little over a month ago, yeah, yeah, the Freedom Ride, it'll be going through Stark County, uh, Memorial Day weekend. Um, all the funds that we raise, of course, goes to our local veterans. And, uh, not only in Stark County, but we wasn't giving enough money away, so we opened it up to any county that touches, uh, Stark County. Um, we have purchased a foyer left for a veteran this year, we have purchased several wheelchairs, we have purchased. A set of specialized legs for a wheelchair for veterans. We have also supplied gas cards for a veteran's family that was displaced because of a kitchen fire. And they were from the Hannah area, and they were driving, and the, the insurance company put them in a hotel in Velpo, so they had. Added gas mileage because their kids still attended school in the Hannah area, Wanata Hannah area. So we supplied them with gas cards to help offset that fees. We do a, we do a lot for our veterans here, and the only fundraiser that we per se do every year is our ride. So when you have a writer come up and ask you to donate, I would appreciate a little bit of donation for them.
And that's why I wanted to bring it up now, cause I know people are out looking for their pledges, so that's why I wanted to know. Anything else, anybody else?
First time I've been to always be, and it's very adorable.
What's your name?
One Wallen.
Well. Well, is there anything else you wanna? All those in favor, aye?